Twenty twenty-three at seven P. M. First item, uh, roll call? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Street?
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present. Next item is prayer and pledge. Vice Mayor Butler?
Lord, we mean today to you like matters of business. We got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Implore your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four, mayor comments. I'd just like to welcome everyone tonight. And during the public hearing, we'd like to hear from everyone. If you would please, when you give your name and address, just let us know if your county or city. And please be respectful and polite. We have officers at the front and back of the room. If anyone decides not to be respectful and polite, they will escort you out. We just want everyone in our, you know, room here to be safe and feel safe. So also, if anyone on the board wants to speak, please address the chair before you do so. Thank you. Item number five, approval of the agenda.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item five passes five zero. Item number six, citizens' comments.
There are none tonight, mayor.
Thank you. Item number seven, public announcements, awards and recognition. City events, Mr. Ross?
Good evening. I just want to remind everyone that our next event is the Star Party at Buoy Nature Park, which is on July the twenty-second, weather permitting. Then our next big event is the Back to School Bash, which is on July the twenty-ninth. And what that consists of, it will be here at City Hall. It will be a drive-through, school supply drive for all children in, uh, in the city limits. It'll be from nine A. M. until eleven A. M. We'll have backpacks for each child that'll be filled with school supplies. If anyone's wanting to donate school supplies, they can drop that off at City Hall as well. Next slide, please. This past, this week on Monday, we had our twelfth annual July third celebration. It was a huge success. There are several people that I would like to thank for that, um, is our staff. Our P. D. and fire department, they, they worked hard during the event, before the event as well and after. Same thing with our public works crew. We couldn't have done it without them. They worked hard several, several days prior to the event with myself and after the event. We stayed here until almost one A. M. that next day, cleaning up afterwards. And would also like to thank Rachel Jones and Maria Bruce, along with Marissa Howell from Apex Bank. They all pitched in and helped as well. And last but not least, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for helping that event take place as well. The production team that we hired on this year, they flew the drone from Food Saver all the way down to Walmart, and they did a collective study on that. And they believe that there was approximately twenty thousand people from point A to point B, uh, for, for the entire event. I spoke to several different business owners to include Dos Margaritas, and they said that they had, had an average wait time of approximately an hour and a half. And that they considered this as their Super Bowl, um, for the entire year. They do more business on July third than they do on Cinco de Mayo. This definitely, this event definitely brings people from all over, from Ohio, all of, all over Tennessee, out to the event, and they definitely support our local businesses and the vendors at the event. So again, thank you to each and everyone that came out to the event, and thank you to everyone that pitched in and helped as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A, community services report.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. They continue, as Richard said, they just continue to work hard, uh, whether it be chipping or clearing off trees, cleaning up easements and right-of-way, and they just, they just stay busy all the time. And I, I want to commend them as well for, um, every time I saw them go by, they're just always looking for something to do at, at the, at the event, and, um, uh, they, they, they stay busy. I'm gonna jump right on into the financial report. You have a, a copy of the bank balances from First Bank, and then you got a copy of the balance, uh, for the, uh, L. G. I. P. reserves on the back. All balances look, look right where they need to be. We're, we're talking with Ben, we're, we're, right now, we're in, in the, getting ready for audit mode. So hopefully, we'll be able to be getting you some, uh, decent, up-to-date financial reports. My goal is August. Hopefully, I won't push that to September, but I'm, I'm thinking I can, we can be back on track, uh, by August. But I, I appreciate everybody's patience on that. It's, it's been, uh, it's been an eventful seven months, for sure. City manager report, I just, I just was very proud of this community. Monday, I always am, but, you know, they just see the support, the smiles. I was talking to Richard today, and I just wanted to, special thanks to him, you know? He, he, he really went, uh, over and beyond, uh, and I think he's doing an excellent job with our events. We were talking, and there was not one single incident at the, at the, at the July third. You put that many people together and not one single incident. And, uh, I was also talking, talking to Chief Humphries, and he said, you know, he said, uh, he, he had a, a few folks he knows from, from Dixon. They said, uh, this, they didn't know about it, and they said, this is awesome. And he said, why can't Dixon put on something like this? And, uh, and he said, oh, I don't know. But anyway, it's, it's pretty unique, uh, venue and event, and I'm, I'm very, very glad to have it go over so well again. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, consent agenda. A, minutes from June twelve, twenty twenty-three, Board of Commissioner work session. B, minutes from June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, Board of Commissioner special meeting. C, minutes from June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, Board of Commissioner regular meeting. D, minutes from June twenty twenty-three, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, Board of Commissioner special meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item nine passes five zero. Item ten, old business. A, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget. We will now open the public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to speak during the public hearing for the budget. We will close the public hearing. A two, ten A. Two, second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, and ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Um, what just keeps going over my mind is, is, um, how, um, this, this pay plan is, is, uh, we, we just hired, I just sent out offer letters to the first two certified officers we've been able to hire, uh, since I can remember. And, uh, it's, it's nice to be able to, uh, equality, and I just want to thank y'all for that. But any questions? Just, I'll try to answer. Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. I just almost want to applaud that. Great budget. Item eleven, new business. A, resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-three, planning commission appointments, three seats. Seeking reappointment is Chris McDonald and Sam Calley. So the way this is gonna work is, um, there'll be a nomination, and there'll be votes on that nomination. If the person gets three votes, they will have one of the seat, one of the three seats, and we will do them in order, one, two, three. So, um, what I would like to do first is have anyone in the, um, audience, if you are seeking a seat on the planning commission, if you could just come forward and just, uh, you know, tell us a little bit about yourself so we can meet you.
Good evening. Good morning, Mayor, uh, city commissioners, and the excellent staff that you have. Again, I say good evening. Uh, my name is Fred Rosenberg. I live at seventy-four fifty-four Cox Pike. That's on the corner of Cox Pike and Northwest Highway. It's the little yellow farmhouse there. My wife and I are retired. We chose Fairview, uh, for our home because of its family values, its location, and the proximity to my grandkids, which is very important. I'm here tonight to apply for a Fairview Planning Commission position. My hope is that if I'm appointed, through my experiences, I could contribute in some way to the smart growth of our community while maintaining the values and history of our present and future citizens. Some of my experiences are, I have a degree in economics with a second major in architecture. I have eight years as a senior designer in the building design and construction division of State Farm Insurance. I have three years as regional manager for a large home builder, uh, back in the seventies, which was National Homes Corporation. I was a commissioner on a county planning and zoning board in Tippecanoe County, which where Purdue University is located. I was president of an H. O. A. in a community of sixty thousand people. I was an advisor to an eight-thousand-acre mountain development in Jasper, Tennessee. I was a small business owner for twenty-three years before I retired. And in conclusion, I would like to say thank you for considering my application, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
If you were not chosen for this seat tonight, would you be willing to serve on one of the other boards tonight that has open seats?
What I would, depends on the board.
The Park and Landscape Board has, has an open seat. It has two seats, only one applicant, so that, that's something that if you were not chosen for this.
If I was not chosen.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Be willing to. I want to contribute to the community. Any other questions? Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Shonda Schilling. I live at, uh, seven-three-eight-zero Cumberland Drive. I would like to be considered for this because in my twenty-year career my husband had in, um, baseball, I moved thirty-five times. I've lived in many, many communities. My kids went to public schools. I've been involved in them. I've seen what works in different communities, and I would like to bring that to, to here. I have a degree in communications. I'm a New York Times bestseller. I have been on the Capitol many times, speaking about many different issues. And, uh, this is, Fairview is our home now, and we've always been involved in anywhere we've ever lived. And I would also like to make that. My kids, like I said, were raised in the public school system, and I coached, and, uh, I like being a part of it. I like to know what's going on. I'd like to see this grow. It's already a great community, but I do think there's things that we could add to it to help with the kids, keep the kids busy, help with the, uh, veterans, help with, um, the teachers. So I would like to be considered. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, my name's Chris McDonald. I live at seventy-five fifteen Nathaniel Woods. I am currently on the planning commission, for those in the crowd. Uh, I've been on it for two years. I was appointed, I think, to a, to a seat that became vacant, so it wasn't a full term. In that time, I was made the, uh, the chairman of the, of the commission by my peers. Like I said, I've been on it for two years. I don't believe I've missed a meeting in those two years. I may have. I believe I have perfect, perfect attendance while serving on the board. Uh, I moved here in two thousand and fifteen, as most of you know. I moved here with zero kids. I now have three. One is in the school system, the second one is shortly following, and, uh, third will have a while. But all three of my children were born here to Fairview, and they'll have that for the rest of their lives, which is why I, I know two thousand and fifteen wasn't yesterday, but, uh, it is a little while ago. So I do feel like I'm becoming vested in this community. I'm starting my second season as the program director for the Titans here in Fairview, Fairview Titans Cheer and Football Youth Program, about a hundred and eighty kids. Hopefully, that's the same number we have this season. As well as work with Chris Hughes during the high school football season in the booth. So I just try to inject myself in the community as much as possible. I have enjoyed my time on the planning commission. I hope to be able to serve an additional, uh, few years on that board, if granted the opportunity to do so. I, I do have a real estate license. I know it's a thorn to a lot of people. I would like for the record to state that I have never been involved in a single transaction inside the city of Fairview. I do not market myself in the city of Fairview. I, I don't advertise it even to friends and family that I know, um, in Fairview. Everything I've done has been outside the city, so just would like that to be clear. As well as just, I'll wrap this up. I've attended multiple M. Task trainings since joining the planning commission, as far as once becoming the chairman, to figure out, you know, better ways of running the meeting, as well as just what is the planning commission's job? What do we do? Having a better understanding of the grasp of that, of that role. But yeah, other than that, if you have any questions, I'll take them. Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Sam, I'd say Salvatore. Salvatore, AKA Sam Calley. I live at seventy-eight thirty-three Pine Crest Court in Fairview, Tennessee. I'm on the planning commission now, and my term is up now. I was in the Air Force for four years. I've been in the metals business for forty years and, uh, lived here for twenty-one years. Both of my children graduated from Fairview High School, and, uh, my daughter was president of student council when she was attending the school. We love it here. I just want to serve. Appreciate your time, you know? Pretty much an open book, you've seen me before, so, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, if that's everyone, then I will, um, open up for nominations. I would like to nominate Shonda Schilling.
I'd like to nominate Sal Calley and Chris McDonald.
We're, we're doing one at a time, Wayne, sorry. That's okay. We just, we'll nominate if we get a second, and if they get three votes, then they're in, then we'll go to the next, the next seat.
Nominations don't take a second. We just, you've nominated her, we vote.
So if you want to do, um, if there's multiple people, I suggest nominations, nominate multiple people, but for one seat at a time. I probably misspoke earlier. So, um, we'll go for the first seat, however many people get nominated, and then just to vote, uh,
So you're talking about the board or the individual seat? There are three seats on the board.
Yes, ma'am. So one seat at a time. So nominate individuals for the first vacant seat.
And just take a roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then the majority of the votes will go to that first seat. Then you move to the second seat, open up nominations to whoever's still willing to, to serve.
Okay. All right, so I've made my nomination. Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Point of order, Mayor, I apologize if I wasn't clear. I think the proper procedure would be open it up for however many nominations.
I'll make a motion for nominations to cease on the first.
Okay. Yeah, if there, if there are no further nominations, then you're ready to vote. But if there are other nominations, then you would, if there are multiple candidates nominated, you would.
So do you want us to list all three at one time?
Yes, ma'am, and then elect someone for each seat individually. So list whoever is up for nomination on the first seat. Vote out of, if it's one person or if it's three people, vote for someone for that first seat. Then that seat's done. Take nominations for the second seat and so forth. So if there are multiple people being considered for the planning commission, I suggest putting them all out on the first go, and then it'll just get narrowed down as you go to the second and third seats.
I'm so sorry, I'm, I'm just a little confused.
Well, right now, we have a motion, we have a nomination
Nomination.
For Shonda Schilling.
So do we vote on that?
So just, I'll remove my motion. You ask if there's any more nominations for that first, for the first seat we're just going on.
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay. Any more nominations?
Mayor, just real quick, I believe one of the applicants just walked in, if you want to entertain up in the floor, uh, for, for introduction.
Oh, okay. Would you like to come forward and just introduce yourself?
Hey, good evening, I'm J. T. Batson, um, resident of Fairview, seven-one-one-two Sweetgrass Circle. Resident for five years. Work at Cryolake Realtors across the street. Sorry I was late, just got back in town off the interstate. But yeah, that's me, in a nutshell. Love taking questions.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, Mayor, you have one nomination currently, Ms. Shonda Schilling, and, and the floor is open for other nominations.
Okay.
I want to nominate Mr. Rosenberg. Rosen or Rosen?
Rosenberg.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Chris McDonald.
Mayor, I would like to nominate Mr. Calley.
Okay, so is it appropriate to vote on the four that were nominated?
Yes, ma'am, so one vote per commissioner, and the majority of the vote, the, the candidate who receives the majority of votes will be, um, appointed to the seat.
Okay.
And, and any candidate who is not appointed will be available to be nominated for the next seat.
Okay. So the first candidate was Shonda Schilling, so we do a roll call?
She's gonna, she's gonna call for a vote, and you're gonna say the name.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So.
I'm sorry, I just, I was still a little confused over how the process went.
So, uh, Ms. Jones, if you would announce the candidates who are nominated, and then, uh, I recommend that you call the roll, and each commissioner, uh, place their vote by voice, and just say the candidate that you're voting for.
Mayor, if I could just ask a question?
Yes.
Just to make this as difficult as possible. Should we, should we put every nomination on the table and say each commissioner gets three votes? I, I guess I just worry about if I'm gonna vote for three of the four candidates, then, but, and someone else doesn't vote that time, could it be watered down, does that make sense? If, um, like, the first round of voting, we might get two, 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 or something. We may not get a majority, does that make sense?
Which means we'll have to start all over again.
That's what I'm trying to.
That's why I was gonna do it and make a motion for nominations to cease, and then vote on Ms. Schilling, and then vote on Mr. Rosenberg, and then vote on.
That's kind of how we've done it in the past, so.
But, uh, however you want to do it.
I mean, you could certainly do that. You can do, you can do one at a time if the board chooses, um, if that, if that's easier.
Okay, so you made a nomination.
I say we just vote on them in the order they were just nominated.
Okay.
And the first three that get it. Is anybody against that?
So then, so then three, three votes would appoint someone to the seat.
And then you would move on to the second seat.
That's correct.
Okay, so, um, we'll do the roll call on, um, Shonda Schilling.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Nay.
Okay, so Shonda Schilling is appointed to the first seat. So now we will go on to, um, I believe it was, Ms. Street, was that, were you the second with Mr. Frederick Rosenberg? Okay. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Street?
Uh, sorry. Yay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Nay.
Commissioner Hall?
This is for Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes, sir.
Nay for right now, but I have a position I'd like to see him fulfill.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Nay. Okay, so the next seat, or the next person is Chris McDonald.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, Mr. Calley was on there before McDonald.
I'm sorry, did I do that in reverse order?
No, he didn't.
I thought Mr. Calley was last.
Mr. Calley was last.
Okay.
Nay. Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Okay, so the second seat is fill, filled by Chris McDonald.
Commissioner Hall, this is for Mr. Calley.
Mr. Calley.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Okay, so our three, um, commissioners, or our three, um, the three people appointed to the planning commission are Shonda Schilling, Chris McDonald, and Sam Calley. Item eleven B, resolution forty dash twenty-three, Parks and Landscape Board appointments. We have two seats available for the Parks and Landscape Board. We have only one person who has asked to, uh, be appointed to a seat. That is Dr. Neil Rice, who presently sits on the board as a member of the Historic Association.
I'd like to nominate Neil Rice.
I would like to nominate Mr. Rosenberg. And if there's no more nominations, I would like to make a motion to elect them by acclamation, which means we only need one vote. If it gets a second.
I'll second.
Or, that's fine. You can second it. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. So, the Parks and Landscape Board members are Dr. Neil Rice and Mr. Rosenberg. Item 11C, Resolution 41-23, Board of Zoning Appeals Appointment. We have one seat for that, and.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mr. Batson.
Second. I'm sorry. I'm just messing this all up, anyway.
All right.
Okay.
I would like to just say something. I, I, I think Mr. Batson will, will make a fine member of that board, and Mr. Magner already has a seat on the Planning Commission, so I think this is a great way to get more, more people involved, so.
So, do we want to close the nominations?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Member of the zoning, Board of Zoning Appeals is JT Batson. Item 11D, Ordinance 2023-10, An Ordinance to Amend the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by Rezoning 17.23 Acres of Property Located on Chester Road, Consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042, Parcel 142.00, From RS40 Single Family Residential to RM8 Multi-Family Residential. Property Owner Kathy Linda O'Nida. If there's anyone here to represent, please come forward.
Good evening again. I want to thank you all for your time earlier this evening in the work session discussing this project. We are really excited about this development. We're excited for the potential opportunity to be here in Fairview, and we are just excited to build beautiful townhomes for the residents here, and be a part of the new Town Center that is in the works of being, excuse me, being developed as well. And happy to answer any questions that you all may have in the time since the work session that you may have thought of, and look forward to hearing your comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do want to discuss some things. Can you tell me, what exactly is going to be behind Sonic?
Townhomes.
And do we know how many?
Not off the top of my head.
What about 96 and Crow Cut?
Not off the top of my head.
There's over 70 units on almost four acres.
So, if you, if you know ahead of time, just go ahead and tell us.
That one, that's the only one that I know. On Old Nashville Road, are there any going in right now that we know of? So, just a suggest, or just a, a comment here, that we've already got two that we know of, happening right now with units, with townhomes, and stuff for, you know, to help the seniors, and the people that work here and want to stay here, and the people that want to move back here. So, I just want to make that note.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Abstain.
Commissioner Street?
Nay.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item number 11D, passes three, four, one, against, one abstain. Thank you, guys. 11E, Resolution 43-23, Site Development Agreement Contract for Board in Place. And that's the city engineer to discuss.
Yes. I'm sure y'all are familiar with the site development agreements.
For those who don't know you, can you just tell us your name?
Curtis Brodman. Worked with Griggs Maloney, with Will Owen as well, and, you know, we're here to help out the city.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Nay.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item E passes four zero, I mean, I'm sorry, four one. Resolution 44-23, Site Development Agreement Contract for Richville Estates, Phase Four. City engineer?
Yes. Just want to state that in the packet, there is not signatures listed, but there is now, you updated the signatures. Okay. We're good, then.
Move for approval.
Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself from this discussion.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval. I'll make a second. Any discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Nay.
Item passes three, four, one, against, one recusal. Item 11G, Resolution 45-23, Site Development Agreement Contract for Bowie Meadows, Phase One. City engineer?
And just the standard site development agreement? Got any questions, just let me know.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Motion passes four one. Item 11H, Resolution 46-23, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Execute, and Agreement Between Extreme Lighting and Sound LLC and the City of Fairview, Tennessee. Mr. Ross?
Yes, ma'am. This contract that's before you is for the lighting and sound for Nature Fest. Extreme Lighting and Sound, they will handle all the production for Nature Fest. They were also the same company that handled all the production for July 3rd as well.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11H passes five zero. Item 11I, Resolution 47-23, A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Temporary Access Easement to Fairview Town Center LLC. City engineer?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Will Owen. I'm with Griggs and Maloney as well, and we are excited to, to be back serving the city in a consulting engineering role. We'll get into that later. But, the item before you tonight is a, what is labeled as a temporary access and construction easement. It is, to describe it, it is the area that is just out here, past the dead end. So, as you're coming up the main thoroughfare, toward, directly towards City Hall, and you take a right, before you turn left to get into the parking area, the roadway will continue into Town Center. That roadway is part of already approved construction plans from prior submittals. This is just the document that provides the developer the access to construct that roadway, as well as some grading improvements, and, I believe, some sanitary sewer. So, with that, if there's any further questions on this, the intention that is identified on the approved construction plans is that that extension, approximately 200 linear feet, will become public right-of-way. So, that's why it is being deemed temporary for now. But when that development comes online, part of what they will do in their initial plating is to plat that road extension as public right-of-way.
Motion to approve with just one adjustment on the resolution, changing the easement document with, right now it says, "Pete Mont natural gasses to Town Center LLC," just for, make sure you say that right?
Sure. Sorry.
It's under, it's under the "now."
Second, with that change.
Any other discussion? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11I passes five zero. Item 11J, Discuss, Discussion, Acceptance of Infrastructure for Willow Crest Subdivision. City engineer?
Thank you, Mayor. This item's coming before you, and this is an item that is, not only to Fairview, but a lot of communities, that is somewhat rare, and doesn't always happen in the normal course of planning monthly cycles. So, this is a circumstance in which the installation of infrastructure for a new subdivision has been completed. The maintenance period has ended. All bonding has been in place, and all the construction has, has occurred. Houses are done. So, part of what your responsibility is as a governing body is, when new public infrastructure has been constructed, has been in place, and has met all of your requirements, then you have to formally accept that as basically a public asset. And so, that's, that's what was before us, from Ms. Tati, who forwarded this item, along with the other agenda items that we've been responsible for tonight. Where we have landed on this is, since it has been, this process itself is a little bit few and far between. One of the things that we know has to occur is, in order for you to take action on it, there needs to be a recommendation from the Planning Commission. And so, I don't believe that has occurred yet in this process, but we wanted to go ahead and, and keep it on the agenda to let, make you aware of it, and then we will be progressing that through the standard, normal procedures of having the Planning Commission review it, send on a recommendation to you, and then you will formally accept it.
So, basically, no, just discussion on this to give us information?
Correct. If you had any questions on that process in general, we'd be happy to answer them, or, or seek those answers for, for our next meeting, but that's, generally, that's, in a nutshell, what's, what, what was before you for discussion. No action necessary.
Any discussion from the board? All right. We'll move on to item 12, Roundtable Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank everyone that's worked on the budget, and I understand now we're fully staffed since the two new officers have been hired. I found that out at the July 3rd, which I think was the best one that I've been to in all the years. And Richard, thank you for everything you've done there, as well as all the guys that helped out. I know Todd and his crew was very instrumental. Will, congratulations. Glad to see you back. Mr. Knox, I forgot to mention you the other day. Thank you for being on board, okay? Thank you. I know the, the lady that handed out all the, the T-shirts and everything, Ms. Rachel, I know you would give out. Tom, you did a fantastic job, and I just want to thank the citizens of Fairview for being fair view. The first person that I greeted that come to our town was the Governor of the State of Tennessee, Mr. Bill Lee. His first, he come walking up to me, and we shook hands, and I said, "Congratulations on your last election. I want to look forward to you being here." He is a, a Fairview person. He was, went to school here at, actually was West High School in, in those days, at the Rec Center. But anyway, it was a very wonderful night, and I want to thank everybody that was involved in it, and thank all the city employees, and want to thank all the new appointees. Mr. Rosenberg, I am on the, the Park and Recreation Board. Ms. Trolle, if you'll get her your information, we would appreciate it. You already done so. Mr. Batson, I'm also on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm glad to have you aboard. Congratulations to Chris, Mr. Calley, and Ms. Schilling. I believe I've spoken enough. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Richard and all the city staff, thank you for everything you did for July 3rd event. It was, it was absolutely wonderful. I'm happy to say that I was part of the very first one 12 years ago, and it is getting bigger and better every year. The only other thing I have tonight, other than telling everyone, thank you for wanting to be involved in the various boards here in our city, is I would like to wish my middle son, Carter, a happy 18th birthday today.
Happy birthday.
He is, he is in Florida, and my mother took him to the Cobalt Restaurant in Perdido Key today, where we have a condo down there at Sea Spray, and he didn't get to hear it, but they spoke about him a couple of times today on AM 950 in Franklin, WAKM Franklin's first radio station, and they played a couple of his songs, so he, he was mentioned, so he's definitely, he's definitely in my heart, missing him today. First time I've not ever been with him on his birthday. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Street?
Um, I just want to say thank you to everyone that was here tonight, um, thank you to everyone who helped with the July 3rd celebration, it was really awesome, um, and please just keep coming, thanks.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor, I, I echo all the amazing comments, looking around before the fireworks, uh, shot on Monday evening, it is a tremendous sight, and, and I know our staff was all hands on deck, so thank you to everyone for ma, for making that happen. I want to welcome, uh, Mr. Greer, I think this is your first official meeting, Mr. Mr. Broadbent and Mr. Owen, welcome, welcome back to Will. Uh, Will has helped Fairview for a long time, and a familiar face, and good to see, and excited to see the Town Center, uh, get started here soon in the extension of City Center Way. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, and, um, staff for the great job you did on the budget. I can't tell you how important this budget was to help us to keep quality police officers and fire department members, and just, you know, we put them through the academy, and they're excited to be here, and now we can give them the financial resources to be able to stay and take care of their families. And I'm just so excited that we all came together and made sure that our officers and fire and the rest of our staff are taken care of, that means a lot to me. The July 3rd event, I mean, it was over the top, it was the best we've ever had. Richard, you did a phenomenal job, um, orchestrating that, organizing, planning, just everything went off without a hitch. I talked to Chief Humphries after, and like, uh, Mr. Darty said, not one incident. With up to 20,000 people in our community for this event, not one incident. That just goes to show you what, you know, our staff and our fire and our public works and the hard work they did to make sure this event was the best. Um, I want to thank the, the vendors for coming out, and the musicians put on great shows, and I want to thank all the citizens of Fairview and all of our, uh, guests who came, because the, you know, with us not having an incident, that was a tribute to how everybody, you know, just acted during this, uh, event, and also, you know, just, um, came and enjoyed it. So, I just, uh, you know, want to thank everybody for that, and Marissa, and Maria, and Rachel, and, um, all of the staff, and Mr. Darty too, so, um, congratulations to Ms. Schilling and Mr. Calley and Mr. McDonald, um, for, uh, having seats on the Planning Commission. Planning Commission's very important in planning our city, so that is a, you know, a task that's not taken lightly. Mr. Rosenberg, we're excited to have you on the Parks and Landscape Board, there are a lot of great people on that board. Um, our, our park is very important to us, so the planning, maintenance, and, um, that group does a whole lot to make sure that our park's taken care of, so we're glad to have you as a part of it. Mr. Batson, thank you for, um, wanting to serve. Our zoning appeals board is equally important to make sure that, you know, when someone asks for something that, and it's, and it's appeal to something that may not have been approved, or they may have a hardship and they need to come to you, you know, it, it's, it's important that the group come, the board come together and make good decisions. So I just appreciate everyone that is willing to serve in our community, because it's a great community, and we just appreciate you coming out and being willing to do that. We've got tomorrow night, um, Stuart, help me with this, with the name, we've got our girls, U-15 girls in Dixon tomorrow night, the state tournament, so they made it to the state tournament. If anybody can, you know, go to that state tournament and support them, it's tomorrow night in Dixon, at what time?
Four, six, and eight.
Four, six, and eight.
And the winner of that advances to the World Series in Louisiana.
The winner advances to the World Series, that's a big deal. Welcome, Ethan, um, I've known you for a long time, and we're excited to have one of our own, um, you know, come join us on our staff. Um, excited to have, okay, tell me your first name again. Curtis, I knew your last name, but anyway, okay, so, um, I, I've worked with Will, I worked with Will and, you know, previously, for a long time, he's the best, I'm so excited to have him back. It was such a seamless, um, process with Will, he's very intelligent. Um, he is, uh, in the role as, as well as Curtis in our city engineer role, so, welcome. I'm excited to work with you again. I don't think I've forgotten anything, um, thank you, everyone, for coming out, and like I always say, let's keep Fairview beautiful and pick up trash and don't throw out. Thank you for being here tonight. Motion to adjourn, heard.